Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of Englewood Cliffs Mayor and Council. Today is October 16th, 2019. I call the meeting to order at 8:29 PM. Would everyone please rise for the flag salute and remain standing after?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every dignity and justice for all.
Would you please remain standing for several moments of silence. The first is for former Englewood Cliffs Fire Chief John Obertwick. Also, for Slavko Medenovic. He's the brother of resident Paul Medenovic. And Maria Seda. She was a 48-year resident. She died at the age of 98. And she's the grandmother of firefighters Matthew and Andrew Nikow. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. Madam Clerk, can I just have a roll call?
Mayor Cran jack?
Here.
Councilperson Woo?
Here.
Sung?
Here.
Savari?
Here.
Hart?
Here.
O?
Here.
For attorney and municipal clerk. Oral present except councilwoman. Please say.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you also please read into the record the Open Public Meetings Act statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting was given to the press and posted as required. Date and time of this meeting was legally given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. This notice is on file with the municipal clerk and posted on the bulletin board. Minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public upon the completion of typing and proofreading by the municipal clerk.
Thank you. I also want to call attention to the month of October. It's Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Please donate. Remember those who have passed and help those who are still with us who need help in their Also, out in the foyer, there is a food collection basket for our borough charity project, the Office of Concern Food Pantry at St. Cecilia's Church in Englewood. If you haven't brought anything tonight, you can still bring it later or tomorrow morning. And I thank all those who have brought donations. I'm also here to welcome the representatives of the Northern Valley Greenway Project. Thank you for being here. Please take as much time as you need to do your presentation, introduce yourselves, and we could actually dim the lights up here.
Well, good evening. My name is Stephanie David. I am a volunteer member of the Northern Valley Greenway. I live in Quasieo. And this is our team leader, Andrew Cash, who lives in Tenefly. We're here tonight because Englewood Cliffs is one of the surrounding towns of the Greenway Project, which we'll get into, that gave resolution support to this project. So we wanted to thank you for that. I'll remind you, give you an update in terms of where this project is at at this point. So, our summer update. Let's see. So, the Northern Valley Greenway is a project to replace almost eight miles of unused trap from Tenefly north of the proposed light rail to North Vale connecting to the Joseph B. Clark Rail Trail in New York State. We hope to replace the orphaned line with a 56-acre greenway that accommodates bicyclists, pedestrians, joggers, invigorates downtowns along the route, raises property values, and provides a safe transportation alternative. CSX Railroad has indicated a willingness to railbank this land. Rail banking is selling it with the agreement that in the future, if a rail line should be necessary, CSX would have the right to buy back the land at a predetermined price. The benefits of a greenway go far beyond the boundaries of its location. It could provide a platform for regional alternative transportation needs and connections to county facilities. The Northern Valley Greenway Committee is a combination of a rotarian service project and a planning committee created by the six municipalities along the rail bed. The committee consists of a mayoral appointees and council liaisons, a team leader, and a rotary representative. The committee is the body specifically charged by municipal resolutions to coordinate municipal, county, state, federal, and regional agency activities. Through extensive research and outreach, the committee developed a wish list of amenities to look for in the project. We identified the needs for separate wide paths for bicyclists, a path for pedestrians, and a separate jogging path to optimize the surface for runners and to keep them away from slower pedestrians. Amenities should include activity zones with areas for things like seating, exercise stations, cafes, or beer gardens. We also determined that the design concept should include an environmental strategy, including pollinator corridors and low maintenance green services. This is an idea with significant support. We have local rotary clubs, municipal resolutions, and not just the six along the track. But we have citizens petitions, nature centers, and activist groups also working with us to support. So, our work to date. The Northern Valley Greenway Committee work has included increasing public awareness and support through project branding, social media, and outreach events. We worked with our stakeholders and the public to develop the Northern Valley Greenway vision and asked the New Jersey Department of Transportation to help us with that. NJDOT agreed that we had a promising project, and they commissioned and funded NV5, which is a consulting firm, to conduct a technical planning assistance study. The study's purpose was to identify any fatal flaws or significant environmental barriers early on that could make a project virtually impossible. The consultant, NV5, extensively studied and characterized each town's corridor, then developed three viable options to proceed. NV5 then laid out future steps. We are very happy to report they did not identify any flaws with the project. They produced a 250-page report and a 50-page summary, which you can find on our website. And we're just going to cover a few highlights here for you today. NV5 characterized the entire corridor. For each town, NV5 matched the extent of the CSX property, looked at nearby facilities that would be impacted by the corridor, and noted any constraints that would need to be addressed by the project. Two models for rail-to-trail paths were proposed. The first, option A, in the report separates users by speed. Pedestrians are physically separated from faster users. As space permits, joggers are separated from bicyclists. The second, option B, in the report has one, possibly with painted lines suggesting speed separations. Costs and a choice between these options were not determined by NV5. Stakeholder and community input overwhelmingly preferred option A, the separate speed option. While the NV Greenway Committee feels that the separate speed option most closely aligns with the community's needs and maximizing safety, a final decision has not been made and will not be made until the design stage. NV5 determined that we could have the safety of three paths in the widest areas with space for activity zones. When the buildable width is constrained, the jogging path and the bicycle path may need to be combined. Depending on the constraint, activity zones may still be possible between things like telephone poles, but probably won't be possible if the constraint was a wetland area like those near the northern nature centers. In the narrow sections in Tenefly, activity zones would not be possible on the CSX property. The shared-use path is a consistent width along the entire route. Provisions for protecting slower pedestrians are limited to paint. The commonly suggested width has continued to increase as greenways have surged in popularity. A third option of reserving space for a potential future rail line with the NVG path restricted to the remaining space was also considered. It should be noted that light rail plans end in Englewood. Any extension is at best decades away for demographic, funding, and regulatory reasons. The existing rail line must be removed and replaced before the line can be used above a few miles in length. If the land were repossessed by the railroad, and if the future plans have room for a path, building a new path would be approximately 2% of the entire project. This would be a relatively negligible amount to rebuild a greenway along future rail in the future. Despite known issues, NV5 submitted what could be done if space for a single rail line was reserved on the CSX property. This option had some support at the public forum. We believe that having a full-featured greenway for several decades at worst is a better option. Furthermore, we expect that evolving technologies will make future transportation solutions completely different from today. So, going forward, one more. So, going forward, our most immediate next steps are to put together the project plan, identify future ownership of the property, and source of the funding to purchase the We're really excited about this project, and we're getting a lot of support in our local communities. And so, we are really hopeful that we can bring this to Bergen County and that it can be something used by everybody that lives in this area. So, thank you for your time. If you guys have any questions, our website, we have a chat.
Thank you so much for being here. While you're here, would you answer questions if the public has any? Because we're all here, everybody will be efficient. So, yes?
Could you identify what the next step is in the process and what you need assistance with, how residents in the area can help?
That's a great question. So, what we're working on now is we are currently working with our internal group to work on options for who will take ownership of the property once it's purchased. Fingers crossed it goes the way we like it to go, but right now, we're still figuring that out. What we would like for local representative or local communities to do is to talk to your local mayor and councils, to talk to people in your community. The more people are talking about this project, the more the people that need to hear for the funding sources that this is really coming along, it's going to make it easier for us down the line when we have that ground surge of more interest.
One more question, too. Is there potential funding available for me to the county or state governments? Is that even possible?
Yeah. So, most of our funding is actually for the purchase and for building of the greenway is going to come from state, county, and federal funds. We're not going to be taking any money from local municipalities or direct people that live in the city. But we, yeah, we are looking in that direction.
Are we actually qualified for transportation alternative funding to settle all grants that each county gets to manage by the New Jersey Department of Transportation? So, the objective is no local municipal funding. There's six towns along the corridor, keep asking how much our taxes are going to go up, how much is going to cost us. And you keep saying, the objective is to bring value to the towns, not to take value out of the towns. So, we have so far resisted asking even for operational funding on the towns because that just changes the whole atmosphere. We want to fund completely federal, state, maybe some county, but the county has a lot of projects, hopefully the best of the way around, and then hopefully relations with fundraising.
Thank you. Anybody else? Will the property be owned by, through a charitable corporation or trust, a land trust? Are you still thinking about that?
That is everything that's being discussed.
Okay. I think it's important that you stress and you structure it such a way where it's clear that no person, no individual, no for-profit company is benefiting from that. That's kind of the assumption that we're making when we're supporting it.
And also, some legal liability benefits if it's a government agency?
Right. Okay. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you.
You don't have to sit through the rest of our meeting. You could pack up. Yeah, we'll continue, and we appreciate it. Although, our meetings are somewhat entertaining from time to time, not always so. So, next on the agenda is a proclamation that Chief Henkelman requested that I provide. It's a proclamation called "Put the Brakes on Fatalities Day," and I'll just read it into the record. It's whereas October 10th, 2019, has been declared "Put the Brakes on Fatalities Day" by the mayor and council of Englewood Cliffs, New Jersey, whereas across the nation, traffic crashes caused 36,750 fatalities in 2018 and are the leading cause of death for young people ages 15 to 34. Whereas in New Jersey, 563 individuals lost their lives in traffic crashes in 2018. Whereas pedestrian-related crashes accounted for 31% of the state's traffic fatalities. Whereas motorcyclists and pedestrians face increased risks on New Jersey's railways as people opt for alternative modes of transportation. And whereas 53 motorcyclists and 165 pedestrians were killed in New Jersey in traffic-related crashes in 2018. And whereas safer driving behaviors such as buckling up, obeying posted speed limits, stopping for pedestrians in crosswalks, and using crosswalks when walking, avoiding aggressive driving behaviors, never driving in park, wearing proper safety gear while riding a motorcycle or bicycle, and focusing solely on driving by avoiding distractions to dramatically reduce the number of traffic-related injuries and deaths. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Em Crenjack, Mayor of Englewood Cliffs, New Jersey, do hereby proclaim October 10th, 2019, "Put the Brakes on Fatalities Day," and call upon everyone to put these lifesaving behaviors into practice to improve safety on the railways, in our community, and throughout the state. Thank you for listening. There's a second proclamation regarding school mergers, whereas the Englewood Cliffs School District is staffed by superb and dedicated professionals who have made the Englewood Cliffs School District one of the best school districts in the state of New Jersey, providing a high-quality education to children of Englewood Cliffs. Whereas Governor Philip "Dunton" Murphy has deemed his objective to combine certain school districts, such as the Englewood Cliffs School District, with the school districts consisting of only grades K through 12 regional districts. Whereas the New Jersey Legislature is seemingly supporting the misguided plans and objectives of Governor Murphy relating to school district mergers. And whereas the residents of Englewood Cliffs are entitled to maintain the current Englewood Cliffs School District as it now exists without any merger or any other consolidation. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Em Crenjack, Mayor of Englewood Cliffs, New Jersey, do hereby proclaim that I will oppose any merger or other consolidation of the Englewood Cliffs School District to the best of my ability, and I call upon the residents of Englewood Cliffs to join me in doing the same.
Where's that on the agenda, Mayor?
I just read it, so it's on the agenda now. The next thing on the agenda...
Why don't you make a motion, Mayor? Do a vote on it.
I'm not on the agenda committee. So, the next thing up is the ordinance, ordinance 2019, public hearing, 19-11. An ordinance of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs in the county of Bergen, New Jersey, excuse me, the public, please, let me get through this, and then you could have your time at the microphone later. Thank you. Providing for road improvements and the acquisition of equipment and vehicles in and for the Borough of Englewood Cliffs, and appropriating $1 million, therefore, and providing for the issuance of $950,000 in bonds or notes on the Borough of Englewood Cliffs to finance the same. So, this is a public hearing. Can I have a motion? Is there anything else to do before that we open to the public? Do you have a motion to open to the public?
No.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
If there's anyone from the public who wishes to speak, only on that one ordinance, you'll have time afterwards to speak on anything else that you want to speak about, but only on this ordinance, please raise your hand and let me recognize you. You can just come in. Sorry. You can have a seat.
Lauren Eastwood, Four Willow Drive. I'd like to know what equipment is going to be purchased with this ordinance and what we are doing about what appears to be a massive surplus of vehicles parked on the tennis courts, parked in the police parking lot. I mean, the police parking lot looks like a used car lot. What is being purchased and what are we doing about apparently unused vehicles?
I guess that's a question for the borough administrator. Can you answer that, please?
I can help you. Was that too many?
No, good. Got it. Last year, we had a resolution that the governing body adopted. I believe it had six vehicles that were given up for auction. So, that's six less vehicles that are in our parking lot. One was left over, which is a huge DPW truck. We just have to figure out how we can get it to the county for their next auction. From my understanding, maybe there's one additional vehicle that needs to be auctioned off. I don't know of a large amount of vehicles that are not in use in our parking lot. So, if you have that information, I would appreciate having it.
A total of eight that were gone.
There's a total of eight?
Eight that were gone.
That are going where?
Off to auction.
Off to auction, okay. Is there anyone else from the public with questions regarding justice ordinance? Okay. Can I have a motion to close the public portion?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All right. So, we need a motion to approve this.
Second.
Have a roll call, please.
I'm sorry, who seconded it?
I did.
You moved it?
Yes.
Councilperson Woo?
Yes.
Sung?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Hart? I'm sorry, she said. Aversa?
Yes.
And O? Yes. Thank you, everyone.
And next up is ordinance 2019-12. Ordinance authorizing a special emergency appropriation for severance liabilities. This is a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. So, the issue I have with the ordinance is it doesn't tell us how the $620,500 is being spent, but we should open to the public.
That was given to you in the email.
It's not here for the public, though. Can I have a motion to open to the public?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
If there's anyone from the public who wishes to be heard regarding ordinance 19-12, it's in the package, but doesn't have the itemization that I've referenced, raise your hand, and I'll recognize you, come up and speak to it. Okay. Motion to close the public?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay. I need a motion to vote for this or not vote for this.
Second.
Councilperson Woo?
I always felt this appropriation should have been included in the budget, so I'm abstaining.
Sung?
Yes.
Savari?
Well, yes, but we couldn't have included it in the budget. We had already hit our cap.
But you knew about it, so how's it an emergency?
That's just the name of it. It's not called, it's not emergency.
It's a bad name for it. Emergency than emergency.
We didn't make up the name.
Yeah. The state provides the title. Aversa?
Yes. No wonder New Jersey's the way it is right now. Calling things at an emergency that aren't an emergency.
Oh. Why do you still live here, then? You keep saying the same thing.
Well, I'm here to fix New Jersey. I'm here to fix Englewood Cliffs.
Yes.
Great job.
Thank you.
You sound very futile about that, but I think it's possible.
You keep saying it.
Yeah, I do, because I keep believing it.
Okay.
Okay. Next item. So, the next up are department head reports. I believe those were distributed to the council, and if anyone has any questions, we don't have any department heads with us tonight. Mark Neville offered to be here, but he's kind of tracking the storm and dealing with storm-related issues because of the leaves that are coming down into the storm drains. So, if you have any questions you could ask Lizette, and she'll convey them to Mr. Neville or to any other department head. And also, as I look outside, the people who are here from the Greenway left cards, if anyone wants to take one. Do the green cards on the railing there?
I will say, Mr. Neville has been working with PSCNG in resurfacing our roads, and I'm very proud to report that this year, I think we're ahead of the curve monetary-wise with the road paving. We met with PSCNG, and we asked for credits for roads that we had grants for, for the state. So, we were able to take credits on certain streets and putting half-streets together to form completely paved streets, i.e. Forest Drive. That's being paved that no extra funding to the borough.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next on the agenda is correspondence. We actually did just get a piece of correspondence from Lieutenant David Hill over the last day or so, and I read it, and I thought I would share it with you, because Lieutenant Hill was the person who was the acting chief when Chief Chaffee was suspended and then after he retired prior to the appointment of Chief Henkelman. And I just want to convey what he wrote, and you'll understand why, to the State of October 14th, "To the mayor and council members, in 1995, I had the honor of joining the Englewood Cliffs Police Department. The experience has been life-changing, challenging, and rewarding in so many ways. The profession of law enforcement is challenging, not only for us but for our families as well. My family has supported me every day throughout my career. I have served as a patrolman, patrol supervisor, tour commander, and Traffic Bureau commander. I have experienced many rewards while serving this community and the general public. These rewards have made any trying times or personal sacrifices worth the sacrifices that were made. As a police officer, we see people at their worst, at their best, or somewhere in the middle. We have a chance to help, make a difference in their lives, and hopefully, a positive impact. The members of the Englewood Cliffs Police Department have continuously shown the community that we are committed to serving them with respect and dignity. This display has always made me proud to be a member of a great police department. Please accept this letter as official notification that I plan to retire with the 2013 year as pensioner of service on December 1st, 2019. I look forward to beginning the next phase of my life. My retirement application to the pension board has been submitted, and the process is underway. Respectfully submitted, Lieutenant David P. Hill." So, I thank Lieutenant Hill publicly. I hope you get an opportunity to do the same, and we wish him well in his retirement. We have minutes to approve. Now, the first one up, September 11th, 2019, is missing all the facts from my speech that I gave regarding the 40 facts regarding affordable housing. I spoke to the clerk about that, and I will convey to her verbatim what I said so that there is a memorial of that in our minutes.
Absolutely. No problem, Mayor. And I mentioned it before, I will gladly add them as long as they're verbatim of what I said at the last minute.
Sure.
Thank you. So, that's the only thing that's missing from that?
As far as I know.
Yes. Okay.
Now, there are other things in here from 2017, 2016, 2015, which I believe 2015, since Ed and Gloria have been on since 2012, they're the only two that could vote on that. So, just be cognizant of which ones you're voting for.
Motion, please, for the minutes?
Second.
Okay. Councilwoman Woo?
I was not here for 2015, 2016. I have not had a chance to review the minutes, so I'm abstaining.
Sung?
I have a thing for the closed session. I wasn't here for office hours special. Yes.
Let me just write it down. Councilwoman Savari?
I was abstaining on closed sessions. I wasn't here at that time. 4/21/2019 special and September 11th, 2019.
Okay.
Thank you. Aversa?
With the mayor's changes on September 11th, it's okay with me. Yes to all of them.
O?
Yes to all except May 5th, 2015, closed session, and March 28th, 2016, closed session.
Is that abstention or recuse? Recuse? I'm sorry. Could you tell me those dates again?
For closed sessions, the first to May 5th, 2015, and March 28th, 2016.
Is that abstention or recuse?
Recuse.
I'm sorry. Could you tell me those dates again?
For closed sessions, the first to May 5th, 2015, and March 28th, 2016.
Is that abstention or recuse?
Recuse.
I'm sorry. Could you tell me those dates again?
For closed sessions, the first to May 5th, 2015, and March 28th, 2016.
Is that abstention or recuse?
For closed sessions, the first to May 5th, 2015, and March 28th, 2016, and March 28th.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
So next up is the public portion. Before I open the public, I just want to kind of guide the conversation if possible. So at our last meeting on September 11th, I articulated for you 40 true facts regarding the affordable housing obligations of Englewood Cliffs under current New Jersey law. And I reminded everyone that I always opposed any residential housing at 800 Sylvan, as at William Woo. I wanted those facts provided to everybody by the borough, but our municipal clerk and borough attorney refused to do those or post them on the website. Well, you did. I leave it to your own opinions as to why they refused. Let me finish. Well, hold on a second, let me finish. Hold on, you can speak after. You can speak after. Well, there's one additional fact. Well, there's one additional fact that I just found out about over this past weekend, which you should know about. I found out about this new fact not from our council or our borough attorneys, but from our adversary's attorneys. It turns out, I found out from reading Normandy's court filings, that there was a full settlement agreement with Normandy and Fair Share Housing negotiated by council members Aversa, Savari, O, and one of their lawyers. I asked for a copy of the settlement agreement, but they and their attorneys refused to provide it to me. Normandy actually wrote to the court as follows, and I quote, "That extraordinary time-consuming and expensive settlement process first involved the parties' execution of a memorandum of understanding, MOU, followed by negotiation, followed by negotiation of a full settlement agreement and implementing concept plans and ordinances." Now, that was the first time I heard about it, and I'm sure you as well. Now, you can't just speak out, you can speak after. You're welcome to come up after, but let me finish. So again, I demand a copy of the settlement agreement from Wunsch, Serenian, Tyler, Aversa, and Savari, but they refused to provide it to me. So tonight, I'm very keen to hear from the public again about the MOU, what is now a settlement agreement that would have implemented the MOU, and how the public wants to be treated by its elected officials. I still have a very clear path to solving the affordable housing obligations of the borough, and that is to build the 100% affordable plan on Hudson Terrace and to stop 800 Sylvan from doing anything other than a 100% commercial project at 800 Sylvan. So now, there are 41 facts. If you request them from me, I have them here, I will provide them to you. Can I have a motion to open to the public?
Go.
All in favor?
Go to the public. I just want to.
I'm sorry, I always.
I just want to make it clear that I was not trying to stop you from putting out your literature, Mr. Mayor. However, there are.
There's an email where you said, "Don't put it out."
Yes, because you would be in violation of the election laws by doing so. You cannot put something out on Borough letterhead as if it is a borough document within 90 days of an election that was clearly laced with political.
No, it wasn't.
Yes, it was.
It was facts.
If you thought it was facts.
If the facts hurt, then that's why you're saying it's wrong. The public deserves to know the facts. The public deserves to know there's an MOU. The public deserves to know there's a settlement.
The public has been well aware of the MOU for some time. The settlement agreement that you're referring to is your belief that you should take the word of our adversary in the case rather than taking the word of your own attorneys in the case. So, but put that aside.
I'm not the attorney in that case, Mr. Mayor. I probably have less information on that case than you do.
Hold on a second. Sorry. The public needs to stop. Mr. Luciano, you're running for office. Be respectful to the.
You're running for.
You want him to be respectful of me? He's going to be respectful.
I just wanted to make it clear why it is that your state was not.
So your denial of me was political.
No, I'm telling you, you deny my run. I am your attorney too, and your attorney is telling you that you're violating the election law.
If there's anyone from the public who wishes to be heard, please raise your hand, and we'll recognize you to come up.
Who did the motion to open to the public, Mayor?
I don't even know if we did it.
No, we did do it.
Who moved to open to the public?
Go. It's a full move. I'll move it now.
Second?
Second.
On a favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're open.
Carol McMorro, 489 Summit Street. I just want to respond, Mayor, quickly to a comment that Ms. Savari stated, and I would appreciate, Ms. Savari, and you're entitled to your opinion, but if you're going to make comments about individuals, you need to allow us to respond if you're directing them at certain people. You were a big proponent of not referencing people in the public without allowing them the ability to speak last year, so I'm going to hold you to that. The statements that you made about the Oprah, you appeared to be misinformed, respectfully, because you were not on the council for the previous three years. You have no idea how Oprahs were handled. I worked very closely with Lizette, and I can attest firsthand that Ms. Geiger put a tremendous amount, as she had a right to, put as many Oprahs in as she wanted to. And she was entitled to get all that information in a timely fashion, as required under the law, which she could have. And if you compare the amount of Oprahs that were in 2016, they're the same. We're just being treated differently because of who we are. So I'm sorry, you're wrong, and you're more than welcome to look into that, and I look forward to hearing what you have to say next month. Would you like me to respond?
No, let her finish, please.
Okay.
Well, I would like to hear her.
So we don't take up your time, Carol.
Well, if she's going to respond about me, I will wait before I go back to my seat. Thank you. Mr. Marinello, that was very kind of you to look out for Mayor Kranjak and not wanting him to post his speech or whatever. Mayor, what was that called?
What's that?
Your 40.
There's 42 facts, that is 41 true facts. So 41 facts.
Okay, so, Mr. Marinello, the response for not wanting to put up for you is because it was 90 days. I believe it's, sorry, I believe it might be 120 days. But, Mr. Marinello, why didn't you stop Mr. Aversa from putting his political piece out and sending it out?
Well, Mr., dear, I don't know what that is, so I don't know what that is.
This was a political piece put out by Councilman Aversa, and why is he not holding Councilman Aversa?
Those are, I'm sorry, those are different rules.
What's the date on that?
Those are different rules. Mr. Marinello doesn't.
Get your hand out of my face.
Get your hand out of my face. Mr. Marinello doesn't enforce rules against Democrats, only against your public.
Mr. Marinello, you have to hold up.
Come on. No, that's not true, Ms. McMorro. I didn't stop the mayor from putting out.
You just, you are protecting him, but you should really have protected him.
No, no, you're not a political neophyte. You know better than this. I don't have to tell. You know better than this. You've been in politics a long time.
Tell me.
A neophyte. You're not a political neophyte. You know what you're doing.
I'm not, no, you made a statement.
I did. So next time, educate yourself on what Mr. Aversa put out versus what the mayor wanted to put out, and how it was paid for and where it was available. Then come back and talk to us.
I think you're wrong.
You're wrong.
No, I think you're wrong. I'm going to move on. And please refrain from calling me names.
A political neophyte is a name? Maybe you just didn't understand the word.
Please be respectful to the residents. You're a borough attorney.
I used the word. Do you understand what it means? Because I think she should understand what it means.
Okay. I'm going to move on to what I set up here. This is a piece of literature that we all received by Ms. Savari and Mr. Song. "We will protect your neighborhood. We will fight 600 multifamily units, including 120 affordable housing units. We will reject multifamily mixed-use high-rise apartment buildings on Sylvan Avenue." And you asked everyone for their vote. Within, I know I brought this up at the June meeting, and I'm going to repeat this again into the record for the members at home that aren't able to come to these meetings, but I know they watch them online. Mr. Wunsch gave a certification stating on January 3rd, "The council authorized him to reach out to Normandy and begin serious and beneficial negotiations." That's the first one. Number two, "On April 19th, 'In the event the parties reach a conceptual settlement, they shall sign a memorandum of understanding,' the MOU, on or before April 18th, 2019, and shall execute a formal settlement agreement on or before May 17th, with all parties to take all steps necessary." And it goes on to number three, where someone instructed Mr. Serenian to add in the words "Mount Moro Subcommittee" to be the ones that work on this conceptual settlement as referenced in the MOU. "On May 10th, Mr. Serenian wrote a letter to Judge Farrington that the parties have worked out an MOU and are in the process of negotiating agreements, and consequently all resources of the parties are forced on settlement efforts." I'm bringing this up because I'm getting to the appellate brief, and why am I bringing this up to you? Because I was one of the three individuals, the public has a right to know this, that was deposed. I sat eight hours in the chair for the borough, questioned by Marty Cathafian from Baby Potavano. I found his questions quite interesting.
Just finish right here, your statement.
No, I'm going to be reading this, Mr. Aversa, because I was interrupted. Thank you.
Yeah, I already gave you over five minutes.
Mr. Aversa, please.
I'd be more than happy to. Like everybody else, Mary, we try to be fair. You're not fair. So go ahead.
Just 25 seconds.
Yeah, you have about a minute.
Okay, so I'm going to read what's in the appellate brief here. "This matter was first set for trial January 22nd. Due to largely the borough's delay tactics, it became necessary to reschedule the trial to March 5th. And as it approached, the borough unequippedly advised the court and parties that wished to settle this case." Mr. Aversa, you've been lying to this public, because this appellate paper goes on to say that "The extraordinarily time-consuming and expensive settlement process first involved the parties' execution of a memorandum of understanding, followed by the negotiation of a full settlement agreement." I'm quoting from this appellate brief, Mr. Aversa.
Who's brief is that? I'm sorry, just tell me, is that our brief?
This is Hill Wallock's brief.
That's our adversary's brief.
Okay, hold up. Let me.
I just want to make sure. Okay, I just want to make sure I understand, because I know I never said that, so go ahead. Go ahead.
Mr. Aversa, you keep interrupting me, yet you tell me my time.
You're still talking, so go.
Then let me just continue, thank you. "Followed by the negotiation of a full settlement agreement and implementing concept plans and ordinances. At the conclusion of that process, the borough held the meeting on July 10th." This paper goes on to say that "800 Sylvan, the borough, and Fair Share Housing reached an agreement in the form of an MOU that set forth the terms of the proposed settlement." And then it then goes on to say that "The trial was adjourned twice. After agreeing to the framework for the settlement as embodied in the MOU, the parties engaged in additional marathon-like efforts to resolve the terms of the implementing ordinances and settlement agreement." Most importantly, this is where this says, "The borough requested 800 Sylvan agreed to delay the deadline in the April 19th order that requested approval of a binding settlement agreement by May 17th." Now, listen, I have to tell you, I find it interesting. These are facts. I turned over 4,000 documents, Mr. Aversa.
Mrs. Serenian, you have to stop speaking out from your seat. If you can't do that, you have to leave.
I want to make sure this council is aware of all the facts, because I don't know what you're being told. I turned over, under subpoena order, 4,000 documents, okay? The borough refused to assist me in putting together the privilege log, so Mr. Martin did the best he could in turning them over. I think it was a 25-page privilege log that we ended up turning over. The most fascinating part of this is that 800 Sylvan's not even curious what's in that 25-page privilege log. Now, if I was going to trial, and I was really worried about the outcome of this trial, I'd be wanting to know what's in those 25 pages of documents that we're not turning over, but nobody seems to care. How could no one care what's in these documents? How does the borough not care what's in those documents that maybe it could help us in this trial? Why is myself or Mr. Perino not being called as witnesses for the borough to help show that we acted in good faith? We are the two people that worked in the trenches firsthand. Why are we not being called and putting on the best fight possible for the residents in this town? It's almost as if you want to lose.
Are we done now?
You want to lose.
Are you done now?
I'm asking you a question, Mr. Aversa.
You talked for 10 minutes, so please sit down. We'll be more than happy to try and answer whatever.
I could sit here.
Your time is up, Mr. McMorro.
Okay, but why?
So, I think.
This is an important.
Yeah.
He's not going to answer you, because he can never answer.
You're refusing. No, let him speak. You're refusing, I'm asking you why.
I'm telling you right now, you're willing to take the words of the adversaries that we're in court against, against your own attorney.
I haven't seen anybody disputing this.
Exactly.
Why are you not disputing?
They're not disputing this. You're right.
I'm looking for it. Please provide it to me.
There's no agreement made.
Okay, then show us the, show us your dispute.
I don't know if it's in court here from their side or not. I don't know if they're even allowed to say that. All I know is no agreement was ever made.
But show us the paperwork that you're fighting.
I'm telling you. On record.
Okay, your words.
So. Mario, you're calling me.
No, no.
So you're playing with words. It wasn't signed, but it was finally negotiated.
I'm saying to you, where is the written documentation from the borough that it doesn't exist? If somebody filed an appellate brief.
But if it doesn't exist, how is it?
You have to fight it to the judge and say, "This never happened."
There is a draft.
But where is it written that it never happened?
This is McMorro.
Where is the written?
You guys want to promulgate that lie, please be my guest. You got people going around petitions saying that.
I was the one that.
That's a lie. You choose to listen to the adversaries than your own attorney.
No, as someone who was deposed, I have a right to ask you, what happened?
You ask, I answer. Thank you.
Well, actually, our attorneys didn't want you deposed. They didn't, we actually fought against them deposing you. The mayor. And Mr. Perino. I didn't see. We didn't think it was necessary.
Correct.
So. Well, why wouldn't you call me as a witness?
You're just making things up.
I'm not the attorney, nor am I an attorney by education, so. Why? I don't know why, but our attorneys are professionals who were hired by the previous council.
Okay.
Well, then why wouldn't they do that? They're still in charge. Because somebody is probably directing them not to call us as witnesses. Then who would do that?
I can just assume that, Carol, it's not true, so. Okay. So just. I could ask until now. Well, here's the thing. We, uh. I'm telling you. All right, Councilman Aversa said no agreement was entered into. What they're saying is that a final agreement was negotiated. So we're playing with words, okay? Well, that's not what I was told from.
You're just being given piece real.
Okay, the other thing is that I'm not being provided with information either, so I appreciate the people in the public who are actually chasing down what Hill Wallock is writing, what Baby Potavano is writing.
That's a very good point.
The other thing that the public should know is that I wanted the Fair Share Housing executives deposed, because I want to know who's financing these people.
You choose not to listen to-
I tell you, Mari, it's not the United Association, you choose not to listen. Now, why in the world would you not depose executives of Fair Share Housing? They're trying to ruin our town, and yet our attorneys aren't even deposing them, okay? People, our lawyers are not fighting for you.
He's a radical, he's going to keep feeding the lawyers.
I'm telling you, that's not true. And it's sad that you're willing to do that, Mari, and sell our town-
Anything for power to that, for politics.
I'm telling this public right now, there's no agreement that ever was entered into-
Right, because you're playing with words. Was there a draft negotiated?
That I don't know.
Yeah, well, you're lying then, okay? Because you know the rules.
That's not true.
You're lying again.
Everybody knew about the MOU, including you.
And Russ, you can smile all you want.
No resident figured that out. You knew exactly what- All right, you're getting very upset, Mr. Aversa, we'll move on, thank you. All right, um, please.
Lauren Eastwood, Four Willow Drive. It is unfortunate that the members of this community have to rely on E Courts and appellate court filings to know what's going on in Englewood Cliffs. Notwithstanding repeated pledges of transparency, the only reason the community knows about the memorandum of understanding is because a resident found a reference to it on E Courts.
We were in litigation. Your mayor was fully aware of what was going on.
Not good.
Every leader-
You are lying again. You're lying.
He's lying.
You are lying, Deb.
Look at the agenda.
I was not telling-
He was in the closed sessions.
You guys never mentioned the MOU until you signed it. You never mentioned the MOU until you showed up with its sign, okay? No, that is, you're lying there, okay?
You're lying.
Sorry.
You're lying.
Let's be very clear.
I'm lying, I'm lying.
Sorry, don't bother me. Okay. Sir, when you want to speak, raise your hand, you can come up, please.
Let's be very clear. The public was not told that a memorandum of understanding had been negotiated until a resident found a reference to it in a court pleading. That's not transparency.
When did you hear about the planning board's plan? The seventy-seven, and the overlay of the whole south side? When did the public learn about that?
Never.
The day that it came up for a vote, that's when you learned about it.
I believe they did have a public hearing. But unfortunately, that's how the public learns about things. We learn about, from briefs, from certifications, and, most interestingly, from attachments to certifications and exhibits. On the eleventh, Lieutenant Tracy's attorneys filed pleadings in connection with his motion for summary judgment. Among them was Exhibit Four, which is the deposition of Captain Scott Mura. I would love to read certain sections of the deposition aloud, but I believe we try and keep this as G-rated. And some of the stuff in here is X-rated. But I would encourage everyone to go on E Courts. You can download Exhibit Four of Mr. Sartagata's filing. It raises substantial questions about the independence and motives of someone who is intervening in Borough litigation. In order to keep this G-rated, I'll stick to that. But I encourage everybody to download it and read it.
Is there anybody else in the public wishing to be heard? Yes.
Morefusis Twenty-Six John Street, Englewood Cliffs. First, I'd like to thank you, Ms. Duffy, for getting the people to trim the tree that belonged to the town that I asked Mr. Eastwood a year and a half ago to do. I appreciate it very much. Thank you very much for your assistance.
My pleasure.
Second, instead of being court street lawyers and second-guessing everybody and lying, why don't everybody go to court when they're supposed to go to court and represent the town? It came to my attention, Mr. Mayor, that you were not in court. And if you were so interested to protect our town, I think that's where you should have been. And I thank you very much.
Everything I do is for a very good reason, for the benefit of the Borough.
I know.
Everything I do, everything I do-
You're in Englewood Cliffs, not in Brooklyn.
Everything I do is for a very good reason and for the benefit of Englewood Cliffs. Anybody else wishing to be heard?
I can never see that side.
Anybody else?
Debbie Fair, Forty-Nine Irving Avenue, Englewood Cliffs. First, I would like to comment that, oh, I'm sorry, am I addressing the council, the mayor, are you too busy? Was political grandstanding on your part to just read a proclamation about the school merger when you know full well that the entire council is against it? And you, as the mayor, had an opportunity to say, "Okay, this is an issue that we're all in agreement on, and Englewood Cliffs is going to stand united against this ridiculous school merger plan." But you chose not to do that. You chose to grab the issue for yourself, grandstand, and just do a proclamation, cut everyone out because, "Oh, I'm sure it'll come out that only you are against it, but however, the Democrats have already come out against it."
So, the council's free to do it their own. The council's free to do their own.
Well, you're late to the party. You didn't tell anyone about the proclamation. Instead, you should have asked the clerk to put it on as a resolution, and you would-
That's fine, they could still do that.
...do analysis in favor of both.
They could still do that if they want.
That's what you should have done.
They could still do that if they want to.
Well, then, change.
I'm not the Borough Council President, I'm the mayor.
Say, okay, are we sitting?
Don't worry, I'll make that motion once public sector's-
I'm not-
Great idea, Deb.
...as a resolution and have the whole council support it. You're willing to do that right now?
They could do whatever they want.
Are you willing to rescind your proclamation?
No, absolutely not, that's my proclamation. How dare you want me to rescind my proclamation?
First of all-
Just my proclamation.
...are not of that type. That, what you said in that proclamation is a resolution. That was a resolution subject. And it should have come to the whole-
That's my belief, that's what I feel, and that's why I convey to the public.
Because you grandstanding and you grabbed it for your own political reasons, and because you knew that the council was unanimously in favor of it, and you didn't want to give them that opportunity.
I don't know where they stand.
You're not political.
I don't know where they stand, they happen to help me all the time.
Why didn't you just bring it and give them the chance to, um?
Go ahead, what's next?
So, next, the lawsuits, my God. I mean, I think I counted like twenty-three on the agenda. Ten are from McMorro's, either Carol or Mike. Three are either with you, against you, or by you.
So, mine are just trying to get information.
And one with this O'Shea. It just seems like everybody that you're politically active with is suing the town. I'm just wondering, it's like, are we your little cookie jar, the taxpayers, who's just paying for all your little pet projects that you want to sue everybody for? I mean, it's absolutely ridiculous.
Well, just to be clear, my lawsuits are for information, not for damages.
Yeah, right.
Okay? Yes, absolutely. But I know facts don't matter for you.
It's a cost of taxes.
I know facts don't matter to you.
It's a little cost of taxes.
It's okay, you've been heckling from out there all day, so keep going. Heckle at the microphone instead.
Yes, I shall. Thank you very much. Saying that there were negotiations towards a settlement is not a settlement. Anybody who has ever been sat on a board, whether it's a school board, mayor, council, any board, if you're in a negotiation, it's not a settlement until it's a settlement. And there was no settlement. And as far as this MOU that you keep pounding everybody with, a memorandum of understanding is a completely normal thing to have.
And what does it do?
And you're in a school board, you're negotiating with the teachers' union, yes, you have a memorandum of understanding.
What else?
Until-
Understanding.
...goes for a full vote with the board, just like something will come to a full vote here.
Thank you for that.
And I will point out that there was absolutely nothing done with the memorandum of understanding until there was a full public hearing, where the public was invited to hear everything that the experts had to say. No one was taking any action until the public was fully informed. You know it, I know it, everybody knows it. It's ridiculous.
It sure was.
Your lying is absolutely-
It sure was ridiculous, what happened.
And now, I want to keep, try to keep it like five minutes. I am so happy that we finally have an attorney that knows the law.
Where?
Right here, Mr. Marion. Not like your attorney.
You know, you're just such a tremendous man.
That was a political scheme.
Boy, you could look in the mirror.
I don't know where you're putting it, how you wanted to-
I look like Gloria. You're going to have to be in the head one of these days.
To put your political views out as a Borough document is absolutely ridiculous.
You're, you're-
He's always insulting.
He's just unbelievable.
When somebody, when somebody doesn't have any facts to stand on, and they only have feelings, they resort to insult.
That's right.
So, that we know. Okay, well, Mrs. McMorro got to go further, so I would like to finish. So, the letter that you were referring to, or somebody brought up, I don't know who it was, that was not paid for by taxpayer expense, and it was not distributed by the Borough, or in the Borough Hall, or on the Borough website, or wherever it is you wanted to put your forty points alike. So-
Time is there.
Okay, wait, what? Mrs. McMorro got to keep going.
This is why I can't let people keep going.
I'm fine with you, keep going, because you're really helping my cause, I appreciate it, thank you.
I'd like to know how Mrs. McMorro knows what's in the minds of Normandy and the council, and what they deem interested to read or not. How would she have, how would she know whether or not Normandy read her submission? Would she set up tape recorder in Normandy's office, and she knows-
Well, that's not actually what she said. That's not what she said.
And she said, "They're not interested." How does she know they're not interested? How does she know the council's not interested? I mean, she can't-
Okay, all right.
Ridiculous, absolutely ridiculous. So-
Thank you.
You can cook, have your insults, it's because you don't have any facts.
So, thank you for sharing your feelings with us. But let me, let me put the facts into context for everybody here and at home. When we found out about the MOU, the MOU had already been signed. William and I found out about it after the fact.
That reason, I might lie.
And then, and then-
That is a lie.
Let's not forget what happened at, I think, at the June or May meeting. At the June or May meeting, Debbie Savari and Ed Aversa said, "Hey, we're going to have the professionals come in, and they're going to explain to the public what the plan is." And I said, "Oh, that's a great idea. Will the, will the public get to speak at that meeting?" "Oh, no, 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 that's going to be at another meeting. Another meeting, not that meeting, another meeting." I said, "Well, that's not right. You know, if the professionals are going to come in and speak, if the professionals are going to come in and speak, then the public should have the ability to ask questions and provide comments." And that's how we got to the July tenth meeting. Now, don't forget, between the time we found out about the MOU, because one of the residents saw it first-
There would have been two meetings.
Hold on, hold on.
You're not interested.
But what happened, actually, is you never mentioned that a settlement agreement had been negotiated, fully.
Who is not a negotiated settlement?
But that's, okay.
That is a lie.
Here's, now it all makes sense.
Mari, you stopped.
Hold on, let me put it in context, Tom. This is why it all makes sense now. Because don't forget, the MOU was to basically tell the judge we're going to settle, and that the settlement was supposed to happen at that meeting, where the, where the public, where the public was not able to do. That's what happened.
You know what? That's pure margarine.
You must never fall on anyone's-
Yes, 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 okay. I understand, I understand, I-
Settle down, settle down.
Thank you, Ms. Thayer, you're helping me so much tonight, I greatly appreciate it, thank you. Okay, anybody else in the public wishing to be heard? Yes, Ms. Geiger, thank you for coming up.
Karen Geiger, Two Seventy Alfred Street. Seems to me that some of the people on this council don't understand how to pass an ordinance, or that approving a settlement agreement would have been the approval of an ordinance which would have required public notice, and it would have also required a public hearing after the second meeting in which it was noticed. So, you're, how do I know so much? Because I understand government.
The public, the public can speak out.
One, number two.
All right, please.
Number two, excuse me.
I have to ask the, I have to ask the public to stop yelling. Please, Mr. Luciano, Mr. Luciano, stop it, Mr. Luciano. Let Ms. Geiger speak, let Ms. Geiger speak. I really want to hear what Ms. Geiger has to say.
Oh, I'm sure you do. Number two, I'm reading from the brief that was submitted by Hill Wallach against us. It was twenty-six pages, twenty-six pages. And it says, "Unfortunately, the Borough reneged on its pledge." And it goes on to talk about the mayor's comments on socialist doctrine, and the toxic alliance, and all the other reasons. Why didn't you quote all those items that were in the brief? Why did you pick one line here and one line there? If you're going to quote from a brief, give the full context of the brief and let the public decide what's relevant in it, not your four sentences that you quote out of context. And as far as Mrs. McMorro's comment on why she and Mr. Perino and the mayor were not deposed, perhaps you're losing a sense of what this trial is all about.
I was deposed.
Not deposed, well, not, first of all, there were two instances in which your attorneys tried to stop the Borough from deposing you, saying you're deposed, you shouldn't be deposed. So, let's not play the primadonnas here on how you willingly went forward to spew all the wonderful news to the Borough about all the information you had. And let's go further. This case is not about what Mrs. McMorro thinks, or Mr. Perino thinks, or even what Mayor Cranjack thinks. It's about how you calculate our affordable housing obligation, and what that's going to be. It's about whether the number is seventy-seven, one forty-three, or two hundred plus, and how do you deal with the unmet need, which will balance that to five hundred and eighty-five units in this town? How are we going to stop Normandy from building as a bright with an overlay zone which it is asking for on its property if it doesn't get its affordable housing, builds its remedy suit? You are not telling the people of this community the huge risk that we are involved in, and what is going on at this trial, when our experts are trying very nobly to defend a seventy-seven unit plan in the face of five hundred and eighty-four as our total obligation, and in the face of what the Affordable Housing Center and Normandy are characterizing as squandered need because the LG property and the White House property were not designated and included in the vacant land analysis. This is all a very technical, technical procedure. And don't, it has nothing to do with people's feelings and beliefs and how hard they worked at all. It's about what happened to the Borough, how much vacant land on the Normandy property can be attributed to our affordable housing obligation, and where we move on from there. And it's all in the hands of this judge. And as far as OPRA's, once again, I have filed many OPRA suits. Please do not discuss what I have filed. I filed OPRA's, many, many OPRA's, and many times I didn't get them. I filed one suit against this Borough, and that's after coming publicly at least three times and asking for the piece of paper that I was ultimately awarded by the court. I chose not to follow, file any additional lawsuits because it costs the Borough money, both to pay for my attorney and to defend itself. So, let's not confuse what happened in two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, and two thousand eighteen with what's happening now. Where a hack is coming to Borough, coming to court, who makes his living on filing OPRA lawsuits and is repeatedly filing them on behalf of selected members of this community, in some cases for information they had when they were members of the council. So, this is not the same comparable situation. Thank you.
Anybody else in the public?
Russell Perino, Two Two Zero, Saville Avenue. I, for one, attended the hearing, the first hearing, the Affordable Housing litigation this past Friday, at least half of the day. And I came back with a few observations, and maybe a few questions. One was that gentleman, a resident of our community, filed a motion to a devine in the suit. His name is Mr. Metta. And the Borough contested, which I thought surprising, and I'm not sure if anyone on this board can say why, the Borough would feel that their interests would not be aligned with the residence who just wants to have a voice in defending the Borough of Englewood Cliffs. I found it troubling that the Borough would resist this gentleman's intervention motion. I understand Fair Share, I understand here to Sylvan, they don't want to hear what he has to say. Why would the Borough not want to hear what this gentleman has to say? Can anyone comment on that?
That's a great point, I oppose that as well. I thought that it was bad form for the Borough attorneys to oppose a resident, and for the Borough attorneys to basically side with Normandy and Fair Share Housing against our resident. Does any members of the board, and I guess I speak to Mr. Avert, Councilman Aversa, and
and Councilwoman Savari, a number of witnesses on the witness list? Are you aware of the numbers of witnesses that were put forth by Normandy, for instance, for this trial?
No, I don't have a list.
Okay. Well, I file these, these E-courts, I think, maybe better than the members of the subcommittee, and that's a little scary in itself, quite frankly. There's 13 witnesses that were put forth by Normandy, 800 Silven Avenue, that could be called at the trial. And they range from engineers, planners, and other experts. The borough has put up two witnesses. Now, numbers by itself maybe doesn't mean much, but watching the examination of Mr. Mistrater on the first day, the opposition is already hammering him, "Well, how can you speak as a engineer? You're not an engineer by trade, you're a planner." So, there's a hole already that we don't have an engineer as a potential witness, right? So, I, I'm having a hard time understanding, and I respect Jeff Serenian completely, but I'm having a hard time sitting in that courtroom, knowing what I know from experience, and watching this process unfold. It's, it's scary. And again, if you two don't know the number of witnesses called, you really should be involved in this. You need to know what's going on. I'm no longer involved. I just watch it as a concerned resident, and I seem to know more information about this than you all do. And that's scary, right? Because the attorneys need direction from this council. That's what they need. They can't just be left on autopilot to do what they think is right. There should be participation by this council. And Mrs. McMorro talked about her deposition. I was deposed as well, too. And it was deafening. I'll say, the silence was deafening. Didn't ask me one question about the part that Cal McMorro and I played, Mayor Kranjak, during the process. And it was very obvious why. And one of the arguments the borough needs to be making is that we were working diligently on our plan, on a 77-unit plan. What were we doing during 2017, 2018? The borough doesn't have the right to call us now to explain that, right? So, I know in the big scheme of things, it may not be the most important item, but it's scary that the borough's attorneys would not even say, "Hey, you're on the witness list. If we need you, we know you'll be there." We would do nothing but help the borough. That's the bottom line. It's not about me, it's not about Cal. It's about what's going on here? This trial is now very different from what it would've been. If the Republican administration had stayed in control, we would've had, we would've had a trial in January, maybe February of this year. And what the trial would've been about would've been the RDP, and would the borough have the right to cure or not? And we were assured by our experts that we would have the right to cure any shortfall. Really wasn't an issue. Even Judge Farrington stated in one of her decisions that we would have that right. What happened was, because of our loss of immunity, now the trial's taken on an entirely different direction. And the judge has the right to award site plan approval, let's call it, to Normandy to build on their property, because we lost our immunity. And quite frankly, the flip-flop that happened this year by this council is what caused us to lose our immunity. It's about nothing else.
That's not...
The judge's words, and let me finish, please. I'm going to finish.
There's many reasons.
Excuse me. It's a matter of losing faith.
There are many reasons.
We were not, the borough was found not to be operating in good faith. Those words mean a lot. There's other things in her decision, too. But guess what? All those other reasons existed for a year and a half. And yes, was she looking for an opportunity to say, "Hey, Angler Close, I'm gonna pull your immunity?" Sure she was, and sure she did, but she never had the opportunity. We never gave it to her. And we made sure we met, we met, we crossed hurdle after hurdle after hurdle. Please stop interrupting me.
Let him finish, please.
We met the hurdles and jumped over every one of them as we had to. So, this trial now is completely different from what it would've been. And the borough and the residents have to understand that. That's what this is about now. We should've been willing to compliance and, and putting forth additional units, Plan B, Plan C, like I call it. Instead, we sat on our behinds for eight months, working on an MOU and obviously a settlement agreement. That wasn't signed, obviously, but obviously was inked and ready to go. So, please don't tell me what happened here. I know what happened. All of the other things that she quoted in that, in her, her decision, were the things that she could've pulled the year before. She didn't because we always operated in good faith. That's the difference.
That's not one.
Thank you.
One?
You're welcome.
Your time's up.
I'm sorry, I'm not finished yet.
How much longer do you think you'll take?
It won't be long at all. But it'll be longer the longer you interrupt me.
I asked a question.
Mr. Mistrater, in his testimony, presented the plan, questioned by Tom Troutner, the attorney for the borough, one of the attorneys. And he got into details about how many acres should be available to Normandy, right? And a lot has been said, and a lot continues to be said about the planning board and our decision, and I still stand behind it. There's pages of, of lies. I'm not gonna spend the time going through pages and pages of them. I dispute...
Mr. Luciano, some respect for your fellow resident, please. Thank you.
I dispute the statements that are made. Mr. Mistrater spoke about how many acres he feels, as a professional planner, would be available to calculate our RDP derived from the 800 Silven site. He's saying that that number's somewhere between 13 and 15 acres. If we had granted that subdivision, that number would be between 20 and 21. There would be no question. So, we talked about numbers, and that's what about this is about, what the RDP is gonna be based upon, the size of that property and the density that the judge decides. So, think about that. It's being discussed at trial. I've been talking about it now for months, and I'll leave it at that. So, I suggest that the, the council members who sit on this committee pay closer to attention to what's going on, because you can't just get this from, from Al Lunch and his opinions as time goes by. You need to hear it yourself. You need to see it yourself. I'm making myself available to attend whenever I can, taking time out of my workday, and I suggest you both do the same.
I was there.
And you were a part of it, thank you. Thank you. And thank you for chairing the planning board. And thank you for chairing the planning board.
Thank you, Russ.
But Ms. Geiger, are you just somehow exempt from the rules? You get to speak out whenever you want, or do you... You know, Ms. Geiger, the rules apply to everyone. All the rules.
Lynn Norton, 900 Drive. Let's also note that Mr. Perrino is out campaigning for the Republicans, and I don't believe you really should start your attack on the Democrats, 'cause this is a longstanding problem. And I did sit, and I listened to those tapes of the planning board meetings, and Mr. Perrino, you did lead the denial. You actually moved for the denial of the application of 800 Silven. Now, we know we had immunity at that point in time, except for the fact, perhaps, that our attorney waited until December 27th to file her paperwork, and it was not received until December 31st. And it had been, if it had been, we may or may not have been in the suit. I would like to hear more from Mrs. Savari about anything that we may need to know, because I know the mayor keeps shutting her down on a regular basis, or to...
Not at all.
Mr. Verstappen?
She doesn't tell me anything. I'd love to hear it.
Are there any facts that we need to know?
Oh, there's, there are so many facts you need to...
Are there any misstatements that have gone on that you'd like to correct?
Well, one of the biggest misstatements is that, for two years, two years, I went through all the agendas, right? So, from the time, from 2016, 2017, until the, Normandy makes us aware that they're going to move to put affordable housing there, nothing, I mean, nothing, is done. The mayor says that the council, the mayor says that the council was always informed...
Ms. Savari's trying to say...
That's okay.
You had your done.
That's okay.
She can speak, but she can't lie.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not lying. Hello? Hello?
Only can lie, right, Mario?
Hello?
Mr. Luciano, I don't understand why you're yelling out. Mr. Luciano, you need to leave. You need to leave and cool off, okay? 'Cause you're turning red, you're screaming, and you're...
It's very time. So, let Mrs. Savari finish, please.
Mrs. Savari, when do you want to leave?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep this short, okay? In 2015, the Democrats worked with Mary Beth Lonigan, okay? A plan was filed, okay, for nine units on the Lions Club, okay? No, that's not, that's the truth. I have the letter. I have the letter.
Never approved. That was never approved.
Let her finish, please, instead of, you know, stop people from...
We were able to extend our immunity based on that plan, okay? So, Mary Beth recommended that our immunity be extended to the courts, and it was extended. Now, for two years, for 2016 and 17, there's actually only three agendas where the mayor and council speaks in closed session in regards to affordable housing. The reason for that, most likely, is because it was only being handled by Cal and the mayor and not the full council.
Lying again.
I have the agendas. I can waive them if you like. So, nothing gets done.
She can speak, she can lie.
And Normandy steps in and files against us. And then, and only then, did they bring Serenian in, in 2018.
So, we had...
So, had we, had we acted on that, and I personally came to a council meeting and offered my help, and I was told that I was conflicted. God only understands why the mayor said that, but he's there.
He lived 200 feet from the property.
And nothing was being done. Instead, we were giving leases for a dollar to Toffey on the Lions Club. So, I'm sorry, there was no plan for the nine units. You did nothing for two years, and now you're trying to blame it on...
Okay. Let me rethought that. We actually had immunity all through 2016, 17, and we lost immunity under your control in past September. So, we lost immunity from the judge when you were in control. Why? Because you misled the court.
Because you have a big mouth.
You misled the court. Well, well, somebody needs to speak for, someone needs to speak for our residents.
You don't know when to lie.
We didn't use it because of you. We are here because you guys not gonna let Plan A.
You make statements.
Right. So, listen, you can lie all you want, for all you need, but not to the public.
It's not appropriate to say that somebody is lying, okay?
It is appropriate.
When that's all of the...
No.
I'm getting your mouth too. I know Mrs. Savari for many, many years...
Okay. That's okay.
I respect what I said on the school board...
That's okay. I know I'm not lying. I can sleep at night.
Good. Thank you for sharing with us.
I can sleep at night.
You're lying, you can't blame me, I'm just in charge. That should be a lie.
Thank you.
Well, that's really funny, because actually, if you look at the council and the governing body, there are five Democratic members on this council who managed to lose the immunity that we did last, only through August 2019. You lost it in August 2019.
We had decisions.
But nothing really happened?
Many reasons.
Well, look, you... That has nothing to do with this.
Okay.
Nothing... We had immunity because we did everything we had to do. We weren't gonna surrender the town to Normandy.
We did nothing.
Savari and Verstappen, first thing they did.
Zero.
They surrendered.
Let's call it to the public, Mario.
She's not the public. Okay. Anybody else who hasn't spoken? You can't come back.
No, but you can. You can, 'cause you remember?
Also, you have to remember that the planning board...
Remember, you can't speak anymore.
Okay, so here, so the, everybody can also remember.
Do you remember how many times you did that?
Thank you.
Thayer, Norton, Al. Al, really? You guys gotta stop. Okay, everybody needs to remember, the planning board... Really controlled the planning board until after, in 2018, 17, 817, 18. All right, so, your name and address. And you've already, actually, you lose two minutes, right? Because you've been speaking for at least...
Fifteen minutes before I even say anything. You gotta be kidding me. Yeah, well, you're all guys, you know.
I will.
No, stop talking from the audience.
Please, please. All right, Mr. Luciano, speak.
I gotta get a glass of water. Mr. Luciano, water. That's respectful, 'cause I know how much you like respect. Go ahead, Mr. Luciano. Glenn Luciano, the mayor's already mentioned my name, 20 Loriot Drive. I'd like to say to the borough clerk administrator, thank you. I've had a dangerous tree on my block since January, and once I brought it up, and her and Mr. Neville said they would address it, even though I was told back in March it would be addressed by our esteemed director of the Shade Tree Commission, that it was going to be taken care of. I waited nine months, nothing. You and Mr. Neville got it taken care of within, I don't know, maybe a month. So, thank you very much. I greatly appreciate it. I didn't have, I didn't want to have to come here and put you all on notice like I did last month, but, but I appreciate you taking care of it. And mayor, I'd like to ask you, I think there's been a lot of talk in town, and people I've talked to, about the ineffectiveness of our Shade Tree Commission and what's been taking place since your new appointment. What are, what's your plan for the Shade Tree Commission, and how are you going to improve it?
The Shade Tree Commission works with the borough administrator and Department of DPW.
You have nothing to do with that?
I check in, and if there's a problem, we deal with it. Like, when you came last week, last month, and you threatened the borough for a lawsuit, right? We, we basically took care of your problem. Had you called me earlier, I would've taken care of it earlier. I wasn't aware of it.
Were you chainsawing?
No, I would've taken care of it earlier. It's really funny, I don't do chainsaws, all right?
I know, you don't do much.
Oh, that's not really fair. That's not fair, because, you know, I don't, I see you come here once a month, I see you heckle from there.
Once a month, actually.
I see you heckle from there. But, you know, most, some of us are actually working every day. Right, well, I'm saying some...
Only our meetings, once a month.
Well, I work every day. I work every day.
Be respectful to the residents.
You're not being respectful to me, sir.
Doesn't matter.
Sir, sir, I am very respectful to you. You just thanked me for taking your tree down. I took your tree down.
Everybody on the council, and you don't say anything.
I just took your tree down.
You don't tell anybody, be respectful to the citizens.
You threatened the borough.
You have a double standard.
No, no, not actually.
And a double standard is really killing this town. Everything that you're doing is killing this town, just like that.
Oh, you can't pay me right now? Thank you for making my job so good tonight, 'cause I love when people like you come up here.
I was sitting over there and did exactly what just took place. You'd say, "Mr. Luciano, you have to leave." But you never say anything to Miss McMorro, ever.
I did, actually. I did. You looked right at me.
Here, here, this side your death, this side your not.
Not true. Not true. I'm right down the middle. Thank you.
You're not right down.
I'm right down the middle.
You're not right down, because it continues, and you have said nothing while, you don't hear it.
I did.
You don't see the hand.
I did say.
You don't hear it.
I saw your hand, that's why you're up here. Anybody else wishing to be heard? All right, the, the audience shouldn't get into it, please.
Motion to close.
Is there any, no, hold on a second. Let's just clear the room.[1651.04]
Let's just clear the room. Is there anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes, ma'am.
What the hell was that to do with anything?
Did you took them out of legal custody open?
Excuse me?
Did you made a comment to this?
All right, please, stop. Ms. McMorro, Mr. Luciano, if you wanna have a conversation, go outside.
God.
Really.
I'm not going anywhere.
Please. Hi.
Hi, my name is Debbie Jackson, I live at 21 Berkshire. And I have sent emails to the Shade Tree Commission, I don't know how many times, about a tree that's killing six of my trees. No response.
Would you mind stopping, you know, the problem isn't on me here?
The tree is half-dead.
Okay.
It's on Lynn Crest. It's half-dead, and I have, um, Colorado screws that I put in, when I moved there, I put in, I think about twelve.
It's in front of your fence, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
And dead for a little while.
Yes, it has, it's half-dead, and it's killing my trees. 21 Berkshire.
What is it?
21 Berkshire. Debbie Jackson.
Ms. Jackson will take care of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know.
It, it'll be taken care of. Thank you for coming today. Anybody else wishing to be heard?
Yeah, really.
Just go visit through the town.
That's not fair. Uh, okay, I don't see anybody else wishing to be heard, uh, so, well, let's have a motion to close.
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, the next item on our agenda is the payment of claims. Resolution 19-184, September 12, 2019, through October 16, 2019. The amount is $5,874,450.67. I just had one question, actually. Um, on, there's a list of about ten items marked NSF, and they add up to $40,000. Um, I just noticed them. What is NSF? Non-sufficient funds, or, okay?
I don't know.
Okay, all right. Um, and then, I had to comment is, uh, we should not be paying Al Wunsch, but he's on the list, so. He's not doing a very good job, sir.
Counselperson Wu?
Some more?
Are there any seconds?
No, I got one second.
Counselperson Wu?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
Thank you.
The next items are resolutions, 2019. Number 185, uh, is the council's override of my veto of ordinance 19-10. The, um, the veto is attached to it, so I won't read it, uh, in the interest of time, but if you have any questions about it, I'm happy to answer them. This is the refunding bond ordinance, providing for payment of amounts owing. Two others, the taxes levied, uh, entered through the Borough of Englewood Cliffs, appropriating $3 million therefore. And I had issues with that. The council passed it at the last meeting, and I vetoed it. And again, you can read the reasons why.
Any emotions?
Some more?
Second. Counselperson Wu?
No.
Song?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Park?
Enjoy it.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes, I have a question for Councilor Wu, though. Did it mean vote for this last time?
No, I abstained last time.
Long time before you voted yes.
He's one-on-one.
Okay, so-
I don't have to say it.
Please, the audience needs to just, uh-
No problem.
Quiet, thank you. Uh, we're done with that one?
Yes.
Okay, uh, or, uh, resolution 186, authorized hold harmless agreement for thirty Loretta court, um, and this is with the building department and a resident.
Correct.
Um, is there a motion?
Some more?
And a second?
Second.
You know, I, I think you should mention the name of the resident, so if anyone has a conflict, they could clear that.
That's a good point.
Do you know?
Uh, Alexander Choi. I have. Alexander Choi.
Okay, his last name is Choi, if anyone has a conflict.
Uh, counselperson Wu?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh, three, two.
Um, 187, uh, is related to the next two also, so, um, 187, we'll do them separately, though. 187 is appointment of emergency management coordinator. Uh, the coordinator, uh, as explained to me, needs to live in town. Chief Henkman suggested that it be fire chief George Drummond's. Uh, I can accept or reject, uh, I will accept, uh, this proposal, uh, provided that he agreed to keep me informed of things I need to be kept informed of, because we haven't had much communication, and I think, um, despite who his brother-in-law is, he needs to communicate with me. So, I will, I will approve this, uh, in the, for the benefit of the borough, but I do need some communications from him.
Actually, mayor, I want the adoption of the resolution and the appointment. I will email, see, just while I copy you on.
Okay, thank you.
As I was saying. Um, may I have a motion?
Some more?
Are we gonna move all three? Yeah, we're doing separately.
Okay.
Second.
Um, I'm sorry, who moved it?
I did.
My second.
Counselperson Wu?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Park? I'm sorry. Aversa?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Okay, next up is 188, appointment of emergency, uh, management coordinator deputy. The proposal was for Lieutenant James Tracy of the Police Department, uh, fill that role. Uh, I had actually, I, I was actually thinking that we would've been better off having a police officer in charge of the whole coordination, and then when the residency requirement happened, um, they were explaining to me, then they realized, I can't do that, so, uh, Lieutenant James Tracy as deputy emergency manager coordinator, I'm fine with that. I, I've actually seen him at an emergency, along with the chief we just talked about, they, they did very well at, um, St. Michael's Valley when they had their fire there.
Any emotions?
Some more?
Yes.
Second.
Counselperson Wu?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
The next up is 189, appointment of emergency management coordinator. Uh, this is an additional deputy, uh, it's, the name provided to me was Timothy Regan, who is a newly retired police department, uh, member, and active firefighter in town, so, um, and he lives in town, I believe, also.
Correct.
So, that, I support that.
Aye. You want a motion?
Some more?
Second.
Good.
Second.
Counselperson Wu?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh?
Yes.
So, the, the next one I have, some reservations about, but we could discuss it. It's, uh, resolution 190, it's the, um, LESO 1033 program. Um, it's basically a program through the Englewood Cliffs Police Department to participate in the Defense Logistics Agency Law Enforcement Support Office 1033 program to enable the Englewood Cliffs, it should be Englewood Cliffs, just adding the word cliffs, the Police Department to request and acquire excess Department of Defense equipment. Um, I'll, I'll support this, but I don't think that it's appropriate that we have certain types of weaponry in town and, and other surplus military items, so, uh, I know police departments throughout the country have had that issue, uh, where, I mean, police departments don't need tanks. I mean, if it got that bad, we're gonna call somebody else, okay? So, I, I won't support this, but I wanna have a discussion with the chief about it, uh, so that we could kinda coordinate what we're trying to acquire here. Um, so, I need a motion.
Some more? There are restrictions on it too, guys. It's all over with, chief.
And this is, just so you know, we always have this resolution, but now that it worried, it's came down from the state that this is not a one.
Okay, all right.
Um, counselperson Aversa and counselperson Song?
Yes.
Uh, counselperson Wu?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, 191, authorization of tax lien redemption. It's set forth in here, in, in the package, it's $279.96, so-
Some more?
I'm fine with that.
Thank you. Uh, Savari and Aversa? Counselperson Wu?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh?
Yes.
Thank you.
192, award bid for pickup and disposal of leaves. Uh, all the information, uh, is set forth in the package. You have a motion?
Some more?
Second.
Counselperson Wu?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, resolution 19-193, authorized, resolution authorizing refund of property tax overpayment. The amount is $2,329.49, that's fine.
Second.
Sorry.
Counselperson Wu?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, 194, it's, um, it's approval of a block party on, um, I don't have it in-
Seventh Street.
Seventh Street? Yeah. Okay, yeah, Seventh Street Block Party. Uh, none of us are invited, but, um, just don't hold on.
Want to be over my- Um, and this also goes with the, uh, the permit application that I wrote up and I sent to everyone.
Right, so, um, the, the Borough Administrator slash clerk has provided us with a form that residents could fill out from now on, and it's a bit of a checklist and, um, consent form. It requires consent from all the neighbors as well.
Correct. And then, if, if there's any suggestions or changes to the plan, please let me know, because the borough will now have something on file to give residents. I need a motion?
Some more?
Second.
Um, counselperson Wu?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Savari?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, um, we have committee slash council member reports. I, I just wanted to, um, mention that the PTA from school did a great job this past Sunday with their fall festival. Uh, it was a beautiful day, the weather was great, the field wasn't muddy, uh, it was quite perfect, and I know how hard the parents, uh, all worked, and, uh, so I expressed my gratitude to them, uh, that day, I'll do it publicly right now, so, thank you.
Mayor, point of order?
Yes.
If I can make a motion to censure you for sending letters to the pension board, I'm gonna read a statement, and then I'd like to take a vote.
Okay.
Mayor Mario Kranjak composed and sent four letters to the pension board filing an official safe sanction under the heading of the confidential advisory notice. These letters dated January 6, 2019, and were sent without authorization and no knowledge of the council. The letters are also allegedly carbon copied to the borough attorney at the time and all council members. This is completely false. These letters have the appearance, the appearance of sanctioned official action, this is also false. These letters have caused and/or could cause faithful employees of the Englewood Cliffs Police Department to have pension benefits stalled and/or delayed. This action is wholly inappropriate and equally improper. Further, Mario Kranjak in certification signed by him that he secretly taped the borough attorney on or about March 5, 2019. This is grossly inappropriate, and this borough spent hundreds of thousands of dollars prosecuting a police chief for his behavior. By engaging in the conduct as set forth above, Mayor Kranjak violated the local government ethics law and disgraced this borough. His actions are grossly improper, and with reference to the pension letters may open the borough to serious civil liability, if not other state actions, namely NJHS 40A: colon 9-22-2. The vitality and stability of representative democracies depend upon the public's confidence in the integrity of its elected, elected representatives. And NJHS 40A: semi-colon 9-22-21 has otherwise violated his duties under the municipal code of ethics. Moreover, Mario Kranjak by engaging in the conduct set forth above has violated his fiduciary and ethical violations to the borough, the council, and the residents, and for other good cause. He should be censured for this action.
So, you know, if you're gonna censure me, then people should understand what I'm talking about.
There's a motion on the table.
Well, I'm, I have the right to discuss this.
There's a motion.
So, let me tell you, actually, here we go.
Here we go.
Here we go. Everybody at home, this is your next campaign flyer, right here, right here. But let me explain this.
Don't raise your voice.
Under, under New Jersey law, NJHS 40A: 9A, I am the senior officer of the borough. I know some of you can't accept that, and you never will, you never did. The whole, not my mayor thing, okay, right?
No, you lied.
No, you lie.
But let me finish.
You lie.
When I wrote the letter to the pension boards, there were charges pending against four people. Okay?
The issue is, do you see?
So you're lying, yeah, because this character, I can get. Yes, you are. I actually advised them that.
You see the council, but yet you did not.
There were, there were charges.
You never gave us.
There were charges when they said, and you, but, hold on, I'm getting to that. And you received them all. And you received all. And if you ignored them, or they weren't given to you by the clerk.
You wanna talk about who lies? You're lying.
So, you can do all you want, you can play all the games you want.
That's okay, this is not a game.
It was an advisory, and, 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 as mayor, and, and, you know, the person is the smiling itself. You are the most of yourself, because I'm actually doing my job.
No, and you're not doing your job.
You're favors for your.
No, I'm not doing anything for anybody.
At the time, the chief had charges pending against him because he was racist.
And what about Henkelman?
Racist? He was.
What about Henkelman?
He threatened to kill our borough.
What did you say in that letter about Henkelman?
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on.
And mercy.
Okay, so, here's the thing, here's the thing. You forgave all that. You forgave all that, and you paid him $700,000 in forgiveness.
The point is, you sent out a letter.
You can do all you want.
Right, to the pension board. And said that you see this council, and this, we were actually in agreement with you. And be warned.
Next.
Second.
Next, okay, when the borough, when the borough attorney.
There's a motion and a second on the table, can the clip? Hold on, roll, please.
When, when the borough.
There's a motion and a second.
There's a motion, or, can you please, continue? You do get it, uh, you do have to record yourself. Go ahead.
Are you done, Mayor?
So, you guys can play all the games, and it's not a game. I'm just telling you that you did her, or his, or that. Because this is what they do.
Now, Mayor, you sent out a letter, and put all of this at risk of getting there, better.
And now, now you wanna censure me, okay?
Well, exactly, you are, exactly, and I will, I will.
View of you.
I will. No, they need to know how you lie.
Actually, they all know.
How you, no, you're a liar, I'm sorry. And you deserve to be, you deserve to be censured.
Okay.
Motion and a second, please.
They were very serious, Chuck.
And I'm going to second that motion.
Of course you are.
Why?
Of course you are.
However, got your email.
Well, that's because you don't read any emails.
No, because of the girl I sent it to.
I see their mailbox full of mail from like April, they don't take anything.
You did not send it to us.
Do we bring in their mail?
It's all over to the public, you can see it when you go there, you see all their mail.
When was the last time that you?
Take the vote.
Read the letters, and put it in their mailbox.
So, take the vote, whoever you want, I know the public supports me and not your cheating, I agree.
We'll find out soon enough. Councilman Wu?
No.
Song?
People, people, please.
Savari?
Yes, because I never received a letter.
Aversa?
Yes.
All four of them.
Oh? Yes. No letter, there was no letter.
Yes. Yes. I have it in my email, I have it in my email.
You did not get it, that's what you said. Now you're a liar, I'm not.
Then I didn't send it by email.
That's a lie. That's a lie. I'm, I'm gonna open that, I'm gonna open.
They'll print it out, they'll print it out, and left it in the door to deliver. Except for the ones in Mr. Wu's, sorry, emailed.
Mayor, with all due respect, don't bring me into this, okay? And I will put my hand on a Bible that no copy.
I know you will.
Oh, I will. That's my.
I know you will.
Right, your God and my God are not the same. I will put my hand on a Bible stating.
Yeah, but I say it wouldn't surprise me.
Was put under my door, nothing. And typically, when you do put something under my door, you follow up with an email, or you Scotch tape something on my door. Yes, I am allowed, I have a right. I have a right, and I don't like disparaging statements.
Okay, um.
Okay.
That's right, right, I'm proud of.
Alright, and that's for the political theater, do your vote, it doesn't matter to me.
It's already done.
It doesn't matter to me, it doesn't matter. Listen, I know this is political comedy and circus for you guys, but, it's very serious, because they took $700,000, and they gave it to a police chief, who threatened to go after the president, who made racist comments, I guess you're okay with that, right? Well, you know what, you can just define yourselves, I, I see.
You can just define yourselves.
Develop their own opinion, as. Because, don't forget also, I think, I think what the public doesn't understand is, also, when, when, when it came out in the tapes, the former chief Chaffey was actually making racist slurs about the Asian community. Threatening to kill. No, you can listen to them all, threatening to kill the American president. I asked the council to, I asked the council, I asked you guys to condemn him to do that, and he refused to do it.
Okay, which is exactly how you operate.
Alright, are you guys happy now? You got your next campaign flyer ready?
We go to the next one? We're conducting borough business, would you like to continue? So, I, I just thank the, uh, the PTA for doing such a great job, and again, I will reiterate that. Uh, you guys should join in in thanking them rather than condemning me, okay? But, if you don't want.
Shut the phones, Mayor.
Alright, so, um, any old business? Well, we have to finish going through the, um, committee reports, I have Ellen's I'm gonna do for her. Oh, okay, well, committee reports, does anybody on any committee have anything to report?
I do.
Hey, what would that be?
I have Ellen asking me to read.
Well, let's just go there, Mike. Just, um, stay with committee reports.
For historical unification.
Both of them, yes, please.
Uh, everyone, there's a cycle fest this Saturday, October 23, and the DPWR, NIA, and the KI, on the parade. The main course is shredded, proclamations, and poker. So please, it's a fun event, and the leaf program starting for 2019. Uh, it'll start, um, October 21st, Monday, and through Friday, November 29th. Please leave all the leaves on the curbside. Leave a little room for the water to drink.
Thank you.
Yeah. Next, alright, so next, um, PTA event was great, Mayor, you're right, um, they were, the, the PTA was a little concerned about the field, and the aftermath of all that, but I told them we have plenty of money in the budget that would take care of the field afterwards. That's the whole reason we can have those kinds of events now at the, at the field, because we have money in the budget to take care of it. So, they were very happy to hear that. Um, Ellen gave me a few things extra to read here, EC Book Club started today, was the first meeting. That's done by one of the residents, Claudine Calnour. Uh, and they, um, was that they do that at the community center, right?
Yes, correct.
So, and that's it, uh, second Wednesday of the month at 10 o'clock. Please feel free to go, I, I, where did they get that, why, on the website?
Um, it was actually emailed, and I am in the process of putting it on the website, correct?
Uh, we have the 8th Annual Trunk or Treat, that's on Saturday, October 26th. I started that eight years ago, thank goodness, a lot of fun, kids love that, I actually like that, because they get to give out candy and eat half of it. Uh, Saturday, 1 o'clock to 4 o'clock, Johnson Field, uh, Johnson Avenue in front of Woody Field. A rain date is Sunday, October 27th. Um, come, come to that, it's actually fun, bring kids, or nieces, nephews, grandkids, whatever you have. Um, she also left me, oh, we have, uh, the Basketball Clinic, uh, registration is ongoing now, started last night. At the upper school, the girls are playing at Fort Lee again, thank God, that's a good program they've run there for many years. And if you need the registration forms, they're on the website. The last item she has is the, uh, Board of Health. Uh, there was a, uh, good turnout at the Flu Clinic on October 7th. There's 68 patients, 50 Medicare residents, 14 paid residents, and four employees. Another date will be set up for some of the residents who need the high-dose vaccine, that has been difficult to get this year and was delayed, so we will try to keep you posted on that. And that's all I have. Oh, and I would like to thank, as a chair of the police committee, uh, congratulate Lieutenant Hill for his service for many years. He is a, a great officer, did a great job filling in for the chief and being our acting, uh, uh, head of the department during that time. I told him it's a, it's a congratulatory event, so he's, he's excited to move on with his life, with his family, so, he's retiring, uh, December 1st. So again, a thank you to Lieutenant Hill. That's all I have. Cory?
Um, I don't have any committee report, but can we go back to the, uh, the resolution opposing the school merger?
Oh, good, thank you. Actually, I, I actually printed something up on Gorbwood, you guys at the, for, for, and that. Gorbwood did a resolution, so Mayor, to read it after your, um, proclamation. It's, uh, it's, it's from Gorbwood, it's not something I, I don't know if we could use, something like that. No, we just have to, have to.
Can you maybe write it properly?
Yeah, well, like I said, I just.
Well, I mean, I came prepared to the meeting, so.
I did too, I brought a resolution.
Yeah, from another town.
But I like to discuss it first, before I just randomly go up and tell the towns to what we're doing.
You want me to write it for you?
Um, no, we have people for that.
I could write it for you if you want, just give me a minute. Yeah, if, if, you can open to the public, right?
For a resolution?
Yes.
I think the proper way to do it right now would actually be just a motion to support.
A resolution.
The opposition to the forced consolidation, and then at the next meeting, we can have a proper resolution.
What motion are you supporting?
Well, I'm, I'm suggesting.
Why don't you support my proclamation?
Well, I'd rather make a resolution, I think that's a little more official.
Well, you can, okay, you have to have.
We're gonna make a, we're gonna make a resolution for the next meeting, but you can make a motion to support, uh, the, the opposition to forced consolidation of school districts.
But that's very general, why don't you just say, uh, you'll support the mayor's proclamation?
Because the mayor's proclamation has other things in it that, that the mayor may not want to support.
Well, if he's gonna support, if he's gonna oppose.
Do you have a copy of it?
If you're gonna oppose school mergers, then you're gonna oppose Governor Duffin Murphy.
Yeah, that's okay, they can choose to do that.
Thank you, I would just.
Do you have, do you have a copy of your proclamation?
Yes.
Where, can I have it?
Sure.
So, uh, so I make that motion.
Second.
What's the motion?
The motion is to support opposition to forced consolidation of school districts. We will have a proper resolution prepared for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion?
Yeah, a motion and a second.
Call a roll, please.
Councilperson Wu?
Yes.
Song? Savari?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh? Yes. Thank you.
Well, good, so, you're ready with your next campaign flyer, right? You've got your censure, you're ready, does, does anybody want to hear what Al Wunsch actually said to me?
Can I make a motion to close?